Good evening and welcome to tonight's Candidates Forum. We have two candidates who are vying for the one open school board seat. For the next sixty to seventy-five minutes, they will each answer questions. And hopefully, the taxpayers and residents will get a better feel for where they stand on certain positions. In front of me is Karen Savasco and Gary Daniels. Just want to go over the guidelines for tonight's forum. The questions were not shared with either candidate prior to the forum. I will ask each candidate to make an introductory statement on their background, preferably for just a couple of minutes. And I'm asking them not to give any statements on why voters should vote for you, even though you can't ask them to vote for you. That will come with a closing statement at the end. You'll each get a closing statement as well. Prior to the forum starting, Karen picked the right number and chose to go first. We will alternate each item so that each candidate will go first once and then second. That way there no candidate gets an advantage for every question. I think with only two candidates, we do have more time flexibility than we did last year with four. However, I still would like to have you hold your answers to three minutes if possible so that we can get more questions in. And with that, Karen, if you'd make your opening statement.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking Granite Town Media for hosting the forum and to thank Steve Martin for moderating our conversation this evening. I'm Karen Savasco. I'm mom to two students who attend our Milford Public Schools where we've had wonderful experiences. I'm running for school board because I care about our schools and want to help support opportunities for all students to ensure success for the future of our district as well as the tremendous value our schools bring for our community. Our family has lived in Milford for eight years, and we have lived in New Hampshire for over twenty years. I've attended Milford School Board meetings and deliberative sessions for the length of time that we have lived here. I previously served on the School Budget Advisory Committee, and I have served as president of the Milford Middle School Parent Teacher Organization. I volunteered on the Middle School Principals Search Committee twice and currently serve on the MHS and ATC Steering Committee. I have a degree in elementary and early childhood education, and I worked as an early childhood teacher for a decade. Later, I was involved with the Development Committee that successfully opened one of New Hampshire's public charter schools. I served as the Chair of the Board for that school and was later hired as the school's Executive Director. Areas of that job that I enjoyed and excelled at were policy development and reporting and compliance. I served on the Governor's Commission to Study Special Education in Charter Schools and also worked successfully with over a dozen public school districts in southern New Hampshire to best collaborate and provide services to students with special needs. Currently, I work part-time in the retail industry. I also volunteer in our community with Milfords and Sixty-Eight Hours of Hunger. And anyone who'd like to talk more about that organization, I am always happy to talk about it. It's a very important organization that serves children in our community. So I'm looking forward to our conversation this evening. Thank you.
Gary?
Good evening. I too would like to thank Granite Town Media and Steve for moderating this. My name is Gary Daniels. I am running for Milford School Board. Milford has been my hometown for over fifty years. I graduated from Milford High, got my higher education through New Hampshire Technical Institute and New Hampshire College, hold a bachelor's degree in management information systems. Occupationally, I had a career in software, both from development and quality assurance to building and managing a software quality assurance department for the New Hampshire Higher Education Assistance Foundation to owning a consulting business. I currently work as an independent insurance agent assisting people with retirement and pre-retirement planning and needs. I'm also a military veteran, having served three years active Army, five, excuse me, three years in the Army National Guard and five years in the U.S. Army Reserve. Politically, I'm completing my twenty-first year on the Board of Selectmen, was previously elected for six years to the Milford School Board and served as six, for six years as your school district moderator. I also served as a state representative for eighteen years on the Labor Committee, was elected to the Senate, State Senate for six years, where I served four years as a Senate Finance Chair while also serving on capital budget and ways and means. If elected to the school board, I'd bring an extensive, well-rounded leadership and legislative experience and a solid thirty-three-year record of honesty, integrity, and commitment in public service, which would be beneficial to the Board and to the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. First question goes to Gary first. What are your top three priorities for the school district and what are your plans for achieving these priorities?
The top three priorities would be, number one, I think we need to, we need to straighten out all of this stuff that's been going on with the shifting and the idea that we want to get the children out of Project Drive up to the high school. There's some consolidation that needs to go on. The plan that's out there right now, I don't think is the best plan. I think there's still options that have not been explored on that. Certainly, the budget is one thing that we need to look at. That's something that has gone up more and more every year, even as our enrollment has gone down, which kind of brings me to the third thing, is that we've lost a lot of, we've lost a lot of students who have gone to alternate education. There's a reason why that's happening, and I think that needs to be explored and the solutions found as to why that's happening and fixed so that we retain the people that we expect are going to be there.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Thank you. My top three priorities, I would start with culture within our district. To achieve an improvement in culture, I would like to see the school board move forward with its obligation to offer a evaluation of the superintendent and an evaluation of itself as a board. Evaluations are great opportunities for goal setting, and so that would be an opportunity to hear directly from the superintendent and the administration as to how they see on a day-to-day basis what an improved culture would look like and how we could get there. And that's amongst staff, amongst students, and amongst parents throughout the district. My second priority would be our facilities. I think we have a lot of needs across the district from, you know, the high school is our oldest building and in need of repair, well besides Bales', which is much older, but in need and repair, so I'd like to see us be able to prioritize that within the budget on how we can make those repairs over time. And another part of that facilities priority would be to address the recent reports about lead in the water in our schools. I know the school board has approved for the district to seek a $50,000 grant from the state to address the issue of filtering that lead in the water. I just don't feel we should wait for that. I feel we should find the money in the budget now and start filtering that water because it is a risk and it should be a priority. And my third priority would be revenue within our budget. If you look, there's now a, I think, fifteen percent decrease in revenue in the budget moving forward. And there's a couple ways I think we need to address that. One would be through a grant-writing position. There's a lot of money out there, and a grant writer would practically pay for itself. And the other opportunity for revenue really comes at the state level, and I think the school board should make it a priority to come together and address our state legislators in support, and I have the bill number written down, but I don't have it memorized. There's a bill moving forward that has passed in the House, and it's going through the legislative process right now, to increase base adequacy for public education, which would more than double the revenue that we would receive from the state. So I think that should be a priority.
Thank you. Karen, you're first for the next question. What do you see as the most important part or role of a school board member? Is it budgeting, the health and safety of students and staff, or is it being a voice for the taxpayers?
I would like to say all of the above. I think the most important job of a school board member is to support public education. And within that priority of supporting public education is the obligation to support quality education for students and also to make sure that the budget that you are presenting to the voters and taxpayers is absolutely necessary. Can't always make a promise to reduce taxes, but we can make a promise that every dollar in the budget that we ask for is necessary.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. In general, all school boards have three primary major responsibilities. Number one, they develop the budget, annual budget for the school system. Number two, they set the policies for the school, which have to match up with state policies. And number three, they hire and evaluate the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Gary, you're first on this one. This did come in from a resident. The resident's question actually stated a bunch of statistics beforehand, which I'm not going to repeat. But the question was, "Milford schools have a relatively high rate of behavior problems, often costing other students learning time. If elected, what is your plan to address the behavior problems in Milford schools and ensure all students are safe and able to learn during their allotted class times?"
I think that's the culture change that Karen was talking about. I mean, it was on my list, too. I think part of that is that the Board needs to hold the superintendent accountable. I mean, we're in charge of the policy, we set the policies, they set the procedures. But we have heard of the disruptions of classes by people, that students that are unruly. We need to, we need to get back to where teachers can teach and not have to be disciplinarians of things. And, you know, whether that's, you know, a frank discussion on how you make teaching fun and exciting and challenging for the students, or whether there are just problems there. I think a lot of it is that we need to bring the parents back into the equation, too. Get the parents involved in their children's education, because if you're not aligned with the school and the parents, that is problematic. It causes problems for teachers, and imagine the superintendent as well. So...
Thank you. Karen?
I've heard these concerns as well. One, I think this also goes back to the facilities issue, because Milford hosts programs for students with emotional developmental disorders, and sometimes that can be loud and sometimes it could be unpleasant. So I think we have to look at our facilities to ensure that we have the spaces set up so that teachers can address the needs of those students when they are having them, so that it's not a disruption to the entire school community. There, in the budget, there are positions, and again, I can't remember the letters for them, BSS, anyway, behavioral interventionist. So I would like to hear more from our superintendent as to how those positions work and how they are supporting our teachers and our students to ensure that we're budgeting and putting our resources in the places they need to be to best support our teachers when addressing the behavior of children.
Okay. Thank you very much. Karen, you get the first one for the next question. This year, the school board is asking voters to approve over $85 million. What do you say to residents who are having difficulty paying their bills and putting food on the table? How would you prioritize the school board's requests?
Thank you for this question. This might take more than three minutes. No, I'll try.
This is, this is a question a lot of people are asking, so...
Absolutely. So my top priority, when looking at all of the warrant articles on the school ballot, the top priority would be twofold. It would be warrant articles four and five, our teachers' contract and our support staff contract, because we cannot have school without teachers and staff. We need to value our educators as professionals and compensate them accordingly, and I think the contract that is before our voters does that. That being said, I think the Bales' project is a priority because we've run out of space at Jox Memorial School, and it is the most cost-effective solution apart from, you know, addressing the needs of possibly, at one point in time, building a new school or an addition onto a school. So it's the most cost-effective solution to creating the space that's needed at Jox with the facilities and the space we currently have. I do support the CTE renovation. This year and next year, this is the only opportunity we have to receive that $28 million from the state of New Hampshire towards this project. In the future, that funding won't be available for career and technical education for, I think it's twenty years, that Milford will have the next opportunity to receive state funding for that. And the high school is in need of renovations. Beyond the career and technical education portion of those renovations, it's creating updated and modern science classrooms and expanding the space for our art classrooms, which are woefully small. It creates a safer entranceway into the building and addresses some of the fire code issues with dead-end hallways by opening those up. It doesn't address all the issues, because the Steering Committee identified close to $100 million in issues at the high school, but they pared back that request as something that would be more achievable with taxpayer funding. That being said, it's a lot to ask for, and so if I had to prioritize them, that's the order I would prioritize them. I go back to the issue of state funding, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the Conval Court decision, where the Kentucky Valley School District took the state of New Hampshire to court and successfully won their case, that the way that the state of New Hampshire is currently funding public education is unconstitutional. The state did not have any sort of defense for their current funding formulas. So there is a bill right now before our legislature to increase that funding to $10,000 per pupil as base adequacy, and in a school district of 2,000 students, that could be $20 million towards our budget. So that's really property tax relief.
Thank you, Karen. Gary?
Thank you. So I think the 85 million is actually much more than that, Steve.
Correct. It does not include the interest.
Does not include the interest, but I mean, you have a $48 million budget as well as a $58.8 million CTE expansion. I'll start by saying that I highly support the CTE programs. I mean, 110%. What I don't support is the proposal that's before us right now, because I don't think all the work has been done. We have to consider, first of all, that we're tearing down the newest part of the building to put on the extension so that we can increase CTE population. And while I'm in favor of increasing the CTE population, the problem we're running up against is that when we built the CTE classrooms to begin with, the deal with the state is we get the money for the CTE programs, but those classrooms have to be used for CTE education. So when you think about it, you're saying that the state is limiting the number of students that you're going to give the opportunity to have those CTE classes. So I think the first thing we ought to be doing is going back to the legislature and putting in a bill that says, if you're going to expand a program, not do away with it, then let us reclaim that old CTE space for general education. And that may make the whole project look a little bit different and a little bit, a little bit less expensive as well. You have to consider that, when I graduated from Milford, there were 1,300 kids in that school. There are now about 750. Every year, the budget has gone up. And, you know, we're at 48 million now, you know, we're paying a little over 18,000 per student. And people are asking, why haven't you got room to move Project Drive into the high school? That was the plan all along, with the superintendent going down to Bales'. My understanding is you only have maybe around 20 to 25 students in Project Drive at the most, and it seems to me that if you've lost 600 kids, then you've got room to move 26 into the high school without all the other changes to take place. So the math just doesn't work. In addition, you know, I get a lot of comments when I talk to people about things, they can't understand why we're tearing down the newest part of the building. And yes, we need to take care of the facilities, but I think we need to do it in a way that we can look a little bit further at a different plan and eliminate those possibilities that will give us a chance to accomplish what we want to accomplish without the high expense that's before us right now.
Thank you, Gary. And you get the first to the next question. Do you support the proposed budget and why or why not? And whether you support the budget or not, what cuts will you propose if the budget fails?
I think I answered part of that in the last question. I think the budget is too much, and, you know, I'll have a chance to add on to that. Mr. Savasco talked about how we need to have more income. We had $1.8 million surplus. We had a 46, $47 million budget. We had, and then we actually, we had another 300,000 worth of additional school aid on top of that. So why are we asking for more and more money when we have a $2 million surplus hanging out there? So I think we need to take a look at that. I mean, when I look at the budget, there's five things I tend to look at. Number one, when we look at the school budget, you know, are we performing the role of government in there? Is it a core function of that, of government? Secondly, is it supplying the essential needs for the school system to accomplish what they need to accomplish? Thirdly, how are we going to evaluate if we're succeeding or not with the initiatives we've got out, we have out there? Fourth, what does all this cost? And then finally, if it's more than we think we can handle, how are we going to prioritize those things? And that's not something that I think one person can do, because, you know, I feel that a major part of this, as a board member, is listening to the others. And, you know, we're trying to form a team here to work together to bring forward something as a recommendation to the public. So one person can't unilaterally make that decision.
Karen?
I agree wholeheartedly with the concept of teamwork. So the $1.8 million surplus from last year's budget was largely due to unfilled staffing positions, and so this year's budget has to contain those positions that are in the contract, even though they're still unfilled, because New Hampshire has one of the lowest unemployment rates in the country. There's just not people out there to fill these positions, and every school district in New Hampshire has open positions, so we are competing to fill these teaching positions and administrative positions and support staff positions with every other school district around us. So that's partly why the budget's where it's at, even though there was that $1.8 million surplus last year. It is staffing positions. Do I support the budget? By itself, I do. It's a 1.5% increase over last year, so by itself, I support the budget. When you look at it in conjunction with the other warrant articles, I think it's just too much of an ask altogether. And so it might not have been the right time to add some of the additions into the budget that were asked for. And if the default budget passes instead of the proposed budget, those are the things that we will have to look at, and the superintendent talked about that at one of the school board meetings, that those are, just some of the additions just won't happen. And one of those positions is another administrative assistant in the SAU office, and one of the reasons I like that position that's being requested is because they are, in the job description, is to handle public right-to-know requests and to even post board minutes on the website. So I just like the idea of a person who has this time-consuming job to be dedicated to doing that, to get information to the public.
Thank you, Karen. Got several questions about the budget, and you both touched on the next one, but I am going to ask it again, because it's a little bit more specific. The school district historically returns a significant amount of unspent funds to the voters every year. Will you push back on the administration's budget requests to bring the approved budget more in line with actual needs to help reduce the impact on the tax rate? And Karen, you're first on this one.
So since I've lived in Milford, the fund balance has gone from a couple hundred thousand in now in last year to 1.8 million. And again, that was staffing. So if we're going to ask for reductions based on fund balance, we're looking at cutting staff, and I'm not sure that that's the best course to go. If, who's filling those positions and roles and responsibilities when those positions are unfilled, and it's leaving a lot of stress on our staff, and it goes back to the culture issue? So what can we do more to fill those open positions and to support our teachers and our students by filling those positions and so that the fund balance is not this astronomically large number, but in line with the need of the district?
Gary?
Thank you. It was good, because actually I didn't get a chance to mention, mention the history of the surplus that's gone on. I've been in school board, excuse me, annual school meetings before, where, and I recall one where there was $700,000 surplus, and we just tried to cut, at the deliberative session, back, you know, $100, $100,000, $200,000. And we just tried cutting back, first of all, like 500,000. That didn't go, so we tried 400. We couldn't even do 100,000, and yet you still have a surplus. So I think there are things in there. I think you need to separate the wants from the needs. But I think another thing, and Karen had mentioned it on the right-to-know request, right-to-know requests can be a heavy burden to government, whether it's the school or the town. But if your, if your administration is transparent, it takes away a lot of that, because people aren't seeking something they think that you're hiding. And I think that's one of the big goals that I would have, is to increase transparency on the Board so that people understood why the school board was making the decisions it was doing, why the policies that were enacted are the way that they are and what we have to follow. Legislature makes changes, and that can swing what you've started to do. So you need to keep on top of those things. But I think there are ways that you can track that, that you can deal with it by following what's going on at the state, what's going on. I think that, I think there's opportunities even to combine the town and the school together so that we can save some money and not have, do our own separate things. So again, that's, that's one of the things that I would look for with my, my experience from the town, is the opportunities that we might have to work with the school on common things, such as we do right now with a beaver problem up at Heron Pond.
Thank you, Gary. Next question. Gary, you're going first. Next question, Gary, you're going first. And again, another spending question. Prior school boards have spent a large amount of the year-end unexpended fund balance during the last month of the fiscal year. How will you approach a similar situation in June 2025? Would you return all the money to the taxpayers or spend it?
I like, I like returning the money to the taxpayers. There are times where I think we have, we have seen that we have an opportunity to take, take some of it. But, you know, again, I would, I would take a look at, you know, whether we're talking about something in an emergency or is it something that could rightfully wait until the next budget to go, to go back and let the people vote on what the priorities are? If there's something that needs to be done, you know, we, we set that budget out there and, and actually we tell, tell people it's a bare bones budget that, that we're presenting to you and we shouldn't really be seeing the surpluses left over. And I think it's, it's much more prudent to give the money back to the taxpayers. Although I believe that the way the school does it, it just goes back to reduce the taxes the next round. So it actually doesn't get sent back in a check.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
We've had over $18 million in deferred maintenance within the district. So that can't be budgeted all for in one year in one budget. But there's a lot of needs within our, our buildings and our facilities. I go back to filtering the lead in the water or paving the parking lots. If you drive down West Street after the rain, you will see a large pond forming in front of Milford High School. There are a lot of needs within our district. So if there is a fund balance, and especially if it's caused by unfilled staffing positions, which we wish we had those people, but they're just not applying for jobs in our district. But if we have that money and we can address some of those needs so that it would reduce the burden in the budget and on taxpayers in future years, then I, I would support using the fund balance to address those needs.
Thank you. Karen, this one, you're first. Voters may be reluctant to support two multimillion-dollar bond articles. Do you support, and I know you partially answered this. Do you support the $3.8 million bond for renovating the Bales school, which is a million dollars higher than last year's request? And should that be a higher priority than solving the high school issue?
Well, I, I believe I did address that, that I believe the, the Bales bond is a higher priority than the high school this year because we've run out of space for our youngest learners at Jocks. And we really need to move the preschool back to Jocks Memorial School. One of the reasons, or the only reason, that the Bales bond is higher this year, significantly higher than it was when it was on the ballot last year, is inflation. It's the economy that we're living in. There has not been any change to the proposed project. It's just the cost of labor and materials has gone up.
Gary?
Yeah, the, the Bales project is key to taking care of the bubble that, that's, that's going through. I supported the Bales renovation last year and I would support it again this year. I think it needs to take place so that the, the correct movement can, can be made. Again, we, we saved $70,000 just in transportation fees from, from moving students from Bales up to the high school on a, on a regular basis. So if that can be made, I think there's, there's ways that you can actually do the swap, bring the, bring the superintendent's office down to Bales and then let those, those other changes with Jocks and such take place. But Bales has to happen in order for that to happen.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. You have, you're first on the next one. What role, if any, do you believe that parents have in affecting the educational program of study taught to their children?
One of my, my strong goals is to get parents more involved. I, I think it's a detriment to the student when a parent doesn't. And whether that takes more interaction with board members and the parents or teachers and the parents, and I know they, they meet on a regular basis, although I'm not on the inside to, to know what they talk about with the curriculum. But I think, I think the parents should, should have a large say in, in what their, what their children are taught. Frankly, I think as we see the enrollment go down, instinctively, I know that the parents are taking their children and moving to an alternate education, but they're doing so at, at a cost to them. And when students are entitled to an education at the state's expense or to the, to the local public's expense, then there's a reason why that's happening. And it really only can boil down to one, one of a couple of things is that, you know, the, the students aren't learning in the environment that they're in or the parents don't like the, the culture that's going on in the school. And so they want to move them out. So we need to address those things because if we can address those things, you won't see, you won't, you won't see the, the movement of, of students out of school. You'll see parents leaving their school, leaving their, their students, their children in school because they'd be satisfied with the education that they're getting.
Karen?
So the school board has several committees, one being a curriculum committee. And there are parents who serve on that committee. So there's opportunities to be involved in the selection or policies related to curriculum within our schools. I trust our teachers to make decisions about curriculum and curriculum materials. So I don't necessarily think that the parent needs to be involved in a day-to-day basis in choosing curriculum, but they should certainly, and they do have the right to know what's happening in the classroom. I think that comes down to communication. Parents who don't feel involved, there's somehow a communication breakdown. So that could be something to look at and how are we communicating to parents what's happening on a daily basis in our schools? The other thing to be involved as a parent, you know, one of the first things I did when I moved to Milford and my son was going into middle school is I joined the parent teacher organization. It's really a valuable experience. You get to meet other parents, but you also get to meet with the principal and really hear about what's happening in the schools on a regular basis. So it's an opportunity for connection for parents.
Thank you very much. Next question, Karen, you're up. The board receives regular reports on who is leaving, including exit interviews. In your opinion, why are staff and administrators leaving even mid-year and not fulfilling their contracts? And what will you do to stop the departures of the district's educators?
Well, first off, they haven't had a contract in two years. So that's part of the reason why we've seen teachers leave because there are opportunities at other districts, any district in New Hampshire. And so certainly looking for opportunities for salary or a different culture fit for teaching would be there. I, I go back to that top three priorities where I talked about culture. And I think we really need to look at that as a whole, the culture of the district and how are we supporting our educators? How are we making them feel valued as professionals? And giving them the tools they need to teach and making them feel valued as professionals on a daily basis? Because teaching, teaching is challenging and it always has been and it always will be. You're dealing with students, you're dealing with emotions, you're dealing with behavior. There's always going to be challenges no matter where you work. But how can we make this the environment where they feel supported and valued?
Thank you.
There was, there was a recent presentation at the, at a board meeting on exit interviews. And some of the things that came up were the lack of a positive culture, hostility, lack of discipline in, in the environment, micromanagement. I think all of those things, lack of support. The teachers felt lack of support for what they were doing. So I think all of those things, things together. I don't know that there's any one thing that, that we could really point on, but I think there's probably about eight different areas that you can pick up off, off the exit interviews that the board needs to pay attention to, work with the superintendent to eliminate those problems.
Thank you. And this is a related question, which you've partially touched on already. How many open positions does the district have now? What is the average number of openings for this school year? And given these numbers, what do you propose the district do to try to fill them? Gary, you're the first one on this one.
Thanks. Yeah, as Ms. Vasco said early on, it's recruitment has, has been a very big challenge. We, we face the same thing at the town here. And we, we made a conscious decision at the town to put personnel as the high priority. Because without the personnel, the work can't be done. And the same can be said for, for the school system. I couldn't tell you how many there are, how many vacant positions there might be at, at the school. Too many. But can you restate that question because there was one part in there that I think was near the end?
In addition to the numbers, it was what will you do to stop the departures? I'm sorry. What do you propose the district to, to try to fill the positions?
Okay. So, yeah, in, in looking at the budgeting, and I, I think we, we talked a little bit about the, the teacher's contract. I think we need to go back and prioritize as to what needs to be done to make an educational system work. And obviously you need, you need the teachers there. They need to be able to have the flexibility and the creativity to be able to teach in a way that's going to pique the interest of, of the student. Technology changes. If we need to bring technology into, into that as a, as a tool for them to learn. But, you know, it kind of shudders when I, when I hear the teachers are out there spending their money to buy things for their classrooms. That, that shouldn't happen. We should be able to supply that as a public, for the public education. Again, I think we just need to kind of prioritize. And I know there's a lot of, a lot of things out there, facilities, infrastructure, things like that. But it may take, looking at the, the, the whole core system that we have. I mean, I walked through the school not long ago and was looking in. There's six, six in a classroom, eight in a classroom. And, you know, the nominal class size is around 21. So I know it will vary according to class and what they're teaching. But I think there's a lot that can be looked at in, in trying to create, create the, the culture and the environment that's conducive to learning.
Thank you. Karen?
So, so first off, I think that we have to look at our culture. But the one thing we need to remember is that in a school, we're working with children. And yes, we've talked about behavior issues this evening. But children bring joy. And I think like we have to remember that and we have to bring the joy back into our discussions about our schools. I look at some other school districts and what they're doing to recruit teachers. Because like I said before, every school district in New Hampshire has open teaching positions, open paraprofessional positions, open administrative positions. There are so many districts who need a superintendent. So, so there are options for educators into where they go. So why do they want to come to Milford? Some school districts work alongside with their teachers' union in doing that recruitment because it shows a partnership between our teachers and the SAU and how they work together to bring that joyful learning to our students. So I, I'm, I'm not sure if that conversation's been had in Milford before, but it's certainly worth having in how we do recruitment.
Good, thank you. Next question, Karen, you're going first on this one. Would you be opposed to adjusting the school schedule so there are no longer early releases every month? They are a major burden on every family in the district.
That's a good question, one I haven't thought about. I see the benefit of early releases for our staff. It gives them opportunities for their professional learning community time, so I see the benefits to that. I also see the challenges that it faces for families. So I would, I, I wouldn't be able to say if I were for or against that without hearing from the administration and the teachers' union and, you know, what's involved in contracts? How is this all going to work together? But finding ways to support families is certainly important. But there's just a lot of pieces that we would have to look into and gather information about before making decisions about changing schedules.
Thank you. Gary?
For me, it's, for me, it's about the quality of education. And I mean, I'd need to do a little bit of research to find out if these early releases are having an effect on the quality education. You know, currently, our, our high school ranks 27th out of, out of 91 in districts in the, in the state. One of my goals would be to move Milford up into the top 10. And if that takes redoing a, a classroom structure or an early release, I'm more focused on what we can do to prepare students to meet the expectations that colleges have for them so that when students go to, to college or even into the trades, after that, that they're prepared. I mean, I've talked with college personnel and found that double-digit of the enrollment coming in there have to take remedial courses to take, to get up to the expectations that the college is expecting to start with. That ends up just costing parents more money where they should have already been taken care of at the local level. So I'm, what I'm interested in doing is hook, hooking that together and saying, are we graduating students with the expectations that colleges have for going in? Or that the trades would have for them coming over there? And likewise, I'd like to see that chain connected, the colleges graduating students that are ready for the workforce and the needs there.
Okay. Thank you. I got a late question in, Gary, and this one's for you first. Knowing what you know now about how the school handled COVID, what do you agree or disagree about their approach? And what would you have done differently?
Glad you're going first.
No, I, you know, it was, it's interesting because I always was a, a big advocate for virtual learning. And I think it still holds its place in some, some places. But, you know, I would, I would talk to students during COVID and ask them how it was going. And, and they were saying, you know what? It's, I'm not getting as much out of it as I thought I would. And, you know, so I, I really feel I'm better off in the, in the face-to-face in the classroom. So I think if, if this, if we had to go back and, and do this over again, I think there'd be a little more thought put into what you could, what you could do virtually versus what really needed to be face-to-face. I mean, I was finding the other end of the spectrum too, where there was someone who is excelling virtually, but their school wouldn't let them take any more courses. So they were limiting them to how much they wanted to take. They, they were basically on a, in a, you know, fast-track college, college course. And, and they were being stifled because the school wouldn't let them take anymore. So I, I think we would need to, to face that. And I think, I think it would be an interesting discussion that the board would have, would have considering what we've, we went through in 2021.
Thank you. Karen?
First off, I do not envy the board who had to go through COVID and make those decisions because as a society, it was such a novel experience for all of us. And it was a virus that we didn't know much about. And so it did bring a lot of fear just because it was the unknown. I was not shy during COVID about advocating for mask wearing because that was something that I knew from a scientific perspective would help spread the disease. That being said, I think that one of the top needs for children at all age levels is social interaction. And there's research that shows that And there's research that shows that the top indicator of success for middle and high school students is connection with an adult in their school and connection with their peers. And that was missing for a lot of students during COVID when we had remote learning and we had the hybrid option where sometimes they were in school or sometimes they were at home. So you know, I don't think I could say what would I have done differently because I think they made the best decisions they could with the information they had available. And that's all we can do in the future. If there's another novel virus that comes before us, then we just have to deal with the information that's being given to us from, you know, the healthcare industry and from our state leaders and just make the best decision that you can with the information in front of you.
Thank you. Okay, Karen, next one is yours first. Do you believe the district's educational philosophy should be to maximize each student's learning results to the best of each student's capabilities? Or to initiate an educational philosophy to achieve equity in student results?
I believe the answer to this question would be to look at our school district's mission and look at our portrait of a graduate. I mean, I have right here that the mission is for each student to be the designer of their own learning. So that really goes into individual successes and to give options to students, opportunities for voice and choice in their learning so that they can maximize their success and their outcomes. Not every student's going to go to college. Not every student needs AP courses. But thank goodness that we have those courses available for the students who need and want them and who are headed on that track. So we need options for students. We have that really well here in Milford. For a town the size that we are and a school district the size that we are, the number of CTE courses and elective offerings for students is phenomenal. So we do that well here by giving choices. And maximizing success should be a priority. One thing that I think influences a student's success is how they feel valued. And I've heard from many of our high school students that the facility is inadequate. They go for sporting events. They go to compete at other schools and they see other high schools in the area. And then they go back and look at Milford High School. And there's glaring differences in issues. It's why I support the CTE renovation, but think that we're going to have to go beyond that in years to come because there are issues. And updating the facility will go a long way to also support students in their success.
Thank you. Gary?
I don't think that we're doing justice to anyone when we're trying to find equity in the outcome. I think the idea behind it is that we ought to be shooting to maximize the potential of each student. We certainly ought to create equal opportunity for them. But we need to find a way to make education exciting, to put incentives in there for them to push themselves to the maximum of their potential. I mean, in one respect, when you're going through high school, you don't necessarily know what you're going to be facing once you walk out the door at graduation. I think that's where board members who have been through that can help and prepare. And that's why I say, and I've read the portrait of the graduate, and it's great that you're creating your own design. But if that design isn't up to the level that it's going to really make you successful in life, then we probably have failed you by not pushing you in trying to get you to the point where we know that you can step out of the doors and into something that's going to give you a successful career. So I know that in setting up the curriculum, they have had a number of meetings where they have gone through. And the curriculum seems to try to tie together first grade and gone up. But what I haven't really heard in all this is what do you expect a graduate to know when they walk out the door? And I would think that you need to know that. And then you can start going backwards and start with the kindergarten and set out a course so that there is a normal path to learning. So that by the 12th grade, you've achieved what you had as a final goal for that graduate, which would tie into the college.
Can I just respond to that? I know that the curriculum committee is currently working on the scope and sequence of K through 12 curriculum to align it in the way that Gary was just talking about.
Yeah, the only thing I haven't seen though, I haven't seen them start from the 12th grade going backwards. I've seen them start from the younger grades going up. And so it's kind of left up in the air as to where we're going to end up versus some other place. We may be doing better than the state academically, but 56% in math and 71% in reading is not something I would be too proud of.
Thank you. Next question. I'm actually going into some that I deleted from my list because I didn't think we would be doing so well on the time. These next two probably have short answers. Gary, the first one's for you. Will you commit to keeping honors and AP courses in the high school?
Yes.
Yes.
Told you it was going to be quick. Okay. And the next one came, I won't say who it came from. Karen, you're first. Our athletic field, high school football stadium, is really the high point of our, in addition to the gym, the high point of our athletic facilities in the district. Our turf is in tough shape. As the announcer of football games, it's very frustrating that we still can't get fiber connection to the booth so that GTM, Granite Town Media, can broadcast all the games. What support of, if any, do you think we should give upgrading that field, including synthetic turf and getting technology to the press box?
So I would support those initiatives, but I think we have to prioritize because we have a lot of needs throughout the district. I know there was a group of parents in residence for a while who were discussing maybe some independent fundraising to make a turf field happen. So I would certainly support any independent fundraising efforts to expedite the process of having a turf field. But I know that there is a lifespan on it and it will eventually have to be replaced. So you know, raise your money, put your turf down and celebrate, but then get back on knocking on doors and doing your fundraising because it's going to have to be replaced again. So yeah, I would support it. But again, it's just, you know, one priority in a list of priorities.
Thank you.
I would have to agree with that. I mean, my priority is education for the student. So you know, I'll take a look at the facilities certainly and including the field and such. But right now, I can say that I could see higher priorities.
And just to be clear, the fiber question to the press box did not come from Chris.
No, but I did catch the begging for money though.
Okay, the last question, I'm actually stealing from Dave Alcox. He finished with this question, and I thought it was a great question. And Gary, you're up first. Is there anything we have not talked about tonight that you would like to discuss?
We've covered a lot of territory. I guess one of the things that, and I quickly mentioned it in my opening, was that I would really like to look for the opportunities to have the town and the school work together on things. You know, whether it's taking care of athletic fields or, you know, maybe the electricity. I know that the school is paying a lower cost than even we're considering here at the town. So I think there's opportunities to look up there, to try to merge the things together that's going to be beneficial to all taxpayers. But the other thing that I want to just talk about is my vision for what Milford could be. I don't think we have to settle for being the status quo, the middle of the pack. You know, again, I mentioned, according to U.S. News World report, our high school is number 27 out of 91. There's really no reason why we couldn't prioritize things and talk with the staff and get on board with an initiative to put us into the top 10 in the state. We have the ability. We've got good classes. We have good teachers. And you know, we need to utilize that. We need to be compliant with state laws. We need transparency so that parents know what's going on and how the system works. We need to go after that affordable, yet quality education that ties together the ability of the taxpayers to support it, but giving the students the edge that they need going into life. We need to create that positive culture, give support to the teachers. I mentioned eliminating the hostility, just changing something so that education becomes fun again. You read some of the reviews that were written on some of the things about Milford from students who have graduated here. And it's like, yeah, well, they try to be funny, but they're not, type thing. So I mean, something has to change. And I think right now, we're seeing that some of the behavioral problems we've been talking about are taking away from that educational opportunity. So we need, I think there's a lot for the board to do. I think it's going to take a lot of constructive talk and a plan to work out so that we can put in place something that's actually going to be successful in Milford.
Thank you. Karen?
So we have in place right now the portrait of a graduate and a strategic plan. But that strategic plan's coming to an end soon, 2025. So I think that we need to look as a district into how we are going to move into our next goal-setting and strategic planning process. And a large part of that, of those goals, will involve culture. And I think improving upon the culture, and our district is multifaceted. It involves our facilities. I hear from a lot of high school students that part of the reason they don't feel valued as a student is the state of the facility itself. So improving upon those things will add to the culture. And when you feel valued, then you can open your mind to grow. And we have phenomenal teachers, very talented. I mean, I'm not going to name anyone specifically, but my goodness, our physics program at our high school is phenomenal. So we have opportunities for students. The staff is there, the curriculum is there. So any other barriers are, you know, largely related to that culture piece. So we need to make our educators feel valued, allow them to teach, and allow our students to know that we value them and do so by giving them quality environments to learn in. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, since this is a kind of an open-ended question, I just want to go back to the one thing that we can really do to alleviate the stress on our property taxes is to contact our state representatives and ask them to support. And I can pull it up right now, the HB number, it's in here somewhere. Oh, it's probably. Well, anyway, it's in here. It's HB. Anyway, it just passed in the House. And it's moving on to the House Finance Committee, a bill that will increase the base adequacy aid that the state contributes per pupil to $10,000 per pupil. That would, in a district of 2,000 students rounding it off, would be a $20 million contribution from the state to the school budget in Milford. And that would provide real property tax relief. So contact your state representatives and ask them to support that legislation.
Thank you, Karen. Well, we're beyond the hour. So I'm going to ask each candidate to make a closing statement. Karen, it's your turn to go first.
So thank you again for hosting such valuable conversation this evening. Being a school board member is a position of public service. I am committed to using my knowledge, training, and experience to serve with transparency and integrity. We should always remember the mission of the Milford schools and keep students at the focus of our decision-making. The most important word that you will read on my campaign signs is "vote." So please come out on March 12th and exercise your right to participate in the decisions on our local ballots.
Thank you, Karen. Gary?
Thank you, Stephen. Again, thank you for moderating this evening. My work experience as a software developer, quality assurance engineer, insurance agent, and then the military has been about analyzing systems, identifying deficiencies, and finding solutions to maintaining system integrity. My responsibility as a military officer included organizing diversified individuals into a cohesive team and creating a culture where we work together to accomplish a specific mission. I've been able to apply these skills for the last 21 years as a selectman and believe these skills would also be beneficial to the school board in terms of organization, compliance, creating transparency, establishing a positive learning environment, and seeking ways for the school and town to work more closely together for the financial benefit of all. For the past year, I have been attending school board meetings. From my work and political experience, I identified a number of statutory violations in the course of the meetings, including the process by which the board entered and exited non-public sessions, the content of meeting minutes, violations of the right-to-know law, and incorrect parliamentary procedure. Board policies also lack transparency opportunities and website deficiencies existed. As a citizen, I worked with the board to identify incorrect deficiencies. And I am grateful to the board for listening to my recommendations and implementing a number of them to make board meetings compliant and efficient. But there is still much work that needs to be done in creating a positive culture, eliminating hostility, establishing a disciplined environment that is conducive to learning, creating transparency and accountability, and supporting teachers. This can most effectively be addressed as a member of the school board. I thank you for your past support. And today, again, I present myself as a candidate who, as a member of the board, would seek creative, responsible, and common sense solutions that produce compliance system and process transparency, parental involvement, and affordable quality education that prepares students for the next step in their lives. I will do this with the same honesty, integrity, and commitment in public service that I have exhibited for the past 33 years. More information is available on my website at garydaniels.net. I look forward to seeing you at the polls on March 12th.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Karen Savasco and Gary Daniels. I appreciate you keeping your answers relatively short. We got more questions in than I had thought we were going to get in. So I want to thank both of you for participating in the forum. I also want to thank the viewers. I hope the information you received in tonight's forum gives you a better feel for where each of the candidates position. I want to remind everyone in town, please make sure you vote on Tuesday, March 12th. The polls open at 6:00 a.m., close at 8:00 p.m., the longest hours in the state. And the voting location is Milford High School at 100 West Street. With that, I want to thank you for listening and wish you all a good night. Thank you.